Okay, good evening. We're ready and going here at 7:03. So, welcome to the Town of Cordero Madera Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 19th. This is a rarity. We're here on a Wednesday due to those holiday things. So, please take a roll call.
Commissioner Vandell? Commissioner Bishoyer?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Kenny?
Here.
And Chair Chase?
Here.
Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As always, at this time in the meeting, we ask that if you've got comment for something not on tonight's agenda, you step up to the microphone for three minutes and say what you have on your mind. I don't think there's anybody in the room who's going to do that. Claire, do you have anybody online that has a hand up?
No hands raised online.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, we'll close that public comment for that which is not on the agenda, and we'll zip right through number three, four, and five, and get right to our business items tonight. So, we have, out of the gate, 208 Summit Drive. This is a preliminary review of an application for design review and variance for the remodel in addition of 2,811 square feet to an existing 1,971 square foot, three-story resin residence at 208 Summit Drive. This is not a hearing at which we're going to take any action tonight. We are going to hear it. We will follow our typical format, so we'll have staff presentation, we'll have applicant presentation, we'll have queries to both staff and the applicant, and then we will see if there's public comment on it, and then we can talk about the project without the usual comment, period, open and close, public comment, as strictly as we normally do for hearing. So that's what we'll do tonight, and Tracy, your name is on this.
Thank you, Chair Chase and Commissioners. Good evening. As Peter said, this is a preliminary review, or otherwise known as a study session, where the commission looks at the project, the applicant can benefit from early consultation prior to a formal hearing on the application. The applicant will present their project. I have some slides to discuss the project as well, and as part of this study session, the planning commission may want to consider mass, height, architectural style, building placement, as well as the merits of the variance. And staff is also asking for Commissioner feedback on a particular development standard known as the increased side yard setback, and I'll discuss that as well in my presentation. This is showing a vicinity map of 208 Summit. It's close to the top of Christmas Tree Hill. The area is zoned R1A low-density residential and also CTH, Christmas Tree Hill special purpose overlay. It's also within the wildland urban interface, or the Lui fire zone. The lot's irregularly shaped. It's 17,126 square feet of gross area of land, and we use net area of land for development standards like lot coverage and floor area. So, the lot is reduced by the area of Summit Drive right-of-way that overlaps the frontage to a net area of land that is 16,051 square feet. The lot's heavily sloped with an average slope of 72%. It's the second steepest lot in the vicinity. The grade of the lot slopes downhill from Summit Drive to the property line at the east. Vehicular access, existing and proposed, is at the top of the lot along Summit Drive. The existing three-story home contains 1,971 square feet of floor area, and this includes some crawl space areas that count towards floor area due to their height. The applicant proposes a total of 2,811 square feet of additions spread out over the three stories of the residence at the south side of the home. I'll just take you quickly through the proposed floor plans. The red line on this slide, it's a red dashed line, indicates the area of additions to the upper level. The yellow line is the footprint of the additions below at the other levels. The project includes a new two-car garage at the upper story near the existing two-car parking deck. The upper level would be expanded to also include a new entry and to remodel and enlarge the kitchen. The existing roof of the upper level is a shed roof with the low point closest to the street. The applicant proposes to modify the pitch and flip it so that the high point is closest to the street. The proposed garage is located above the additions to other levels of the home and is 36 feet in overall maximum height, where code maximum is 30 feet. This exceedance would require a variance, and we'll cover that a little bit later in my presentation. The middle level would be expanded by 902 square feet, and note that there are two new roof decks above the lowest level additions that would be accessed from this middle level. This is the lower level floor plan, and briefly, it would be expanded by 639 square feet. Some areas of the crawl space, as I mentioned before, count as floor area because they're more than five feet above the grade at the perimeter, and so I've noted that in the green outline on this slide. This next slide is showing existing, proposed, and required development standards. The project complies with lot coverage, floor area, and parking standards for R1A. Variance is requested for the project to exceed maximum allowed height and potentially for encroachment into the increased side yard setback, which again, I'll discuss in a little bit. It's worth noting that for properties on Christmas Tree Hill, the front yard setback is flexible to help facilitate the most appropriate site planning for these heavily sloped lots, and the front yard setback dimension would be determined through the design review process. It's very common for lots on Christmas Tree Hill that slope down or slope up from the street to have garages or the house itself very close to the front property line, as is similar to the proposed project. The existing home is 18 feet, three and a half inches at the front yard setback, and that's measured to the edge of the right-of-way. The existing car deck is four feet and three quarters of an inch. The applicant is proposing a front yard setback of nine feet, six and three quarters inches. The front yard setback for a property that's zoned R1A that is not on Christmas Tree Hill is 25 feet. Staff is requesting the planning commission provide feedback on whether the increased side yard setback should apply to this property. The code provision is in italics on the screen. The required side setback for parcels that are zoned R1A is 10 feet, but since the lot has a slope that's more than 10%, an increased side yard setback may apply to the project site if the grade of the lot at the side yard is higher than the adjacent lot. The essence of the code provision requires side elevation, step backs, to lessen the visual impact of taller structures on the downhill property. What it's saying is worded in a complicated way, and it basically requires that for every two feet of height over 12 feet, you would increase the side setback by an additional foot. So in this case, the building height at 36 feet in maximum overall height would require the setback to increase by an additional 12 feet. So in other words, the side setback on the south side is not 10 feet, it's 22 feet. And it's unclear if this code provision should apply to the project site. Staff feels there's room for interpretation because the topography of this lot relative to other lots is complex. This next slide is showing the grade of 208 Summit, and it drops heavily towards the south side property line, and similarly, the grade of the adjacent lot at number 170 also drops steeply towards the shared property line, and this effectively creates a valley in between the two properties, which is occupied by Spring Trail. Spring Trail is a publicly maintained path, and is the stairs, if you visited the project site, that ascend from the base of Summit to the top of Summit at the front. There's a third small parcel that's just south of 208 Summit, and it's developed with a single-car garage. And what this slide is showing is showing topographic contours for the area, and the closer that those lines are indicates the steepest of terrain. On this slide is some information, again, about the relationship between the grades of the lot. They're not necessarily represent the conditions in which typically an increased side yard setback would apply. The structure at 170 Summit is at a lower elevation, but it's not adjacent to the side yard of 208 Summit. In other words, the homes are not side-by-side, they're more oriented side to rear. On the left is a map with the distance from the corner of the home at 208 Summit to the corner of the home at 170 Summit Drive, and then to the right, I've included a photo showing the relationship between the two structures. The red boxes inside of that is the building at 170 Summit Drive, and of course, to the right is 208 Summit. There are some other photos of the project site that is attachment three to the staff report, and the applicant also provided some photos of the surrounding development, that's attachment four. Here, I'm showing an example of properties that are developed with homes that are more side-by-side, represent instances in which the increased side yard setback is applied to the lot at the higher elevation. And the objective of the side setback, the increased side setback, as I said before, is to lessen the visual impact of a taller structure that sits higher than the property that's looking at it, that sits at the lower elevation, where application of an increased side yard setback, without that, the underlying setbacks would otherwise apply, which puts structures very close to a side property line, and our side setbacks are five feet, six feet, and in the R1A, 10 feet. This is an exhibit showing increased side yard setback in three dimensions. The required increased side yard setback is shown in light blue, and the areas that would not comply with an increased side yard setback are shown extending beyond that light blue layer. And if an increased side yard setback is applicable to the project, the project would either require a variance for the south side setback to allow a 10-foot setback. In other words, the variance would be for not increasing the setback by the additional 12 feet for the upper level additions. Or if the planning commission felt the variance findings couldn't be made, the applicant would need to reduce the height of the additions on the south elevation, or reduce the size to comply with an increased side yard setback. And lastly, if the increased side yard setback is not applicable, the setback for the structure would be 10 feet. However, 10 feet is not a target to be achieved, it would be the minimum required, and through the design review process, in order to make design review findings, the commission could require setbacks or step backs that are greater than what is required by underlying zoning. And this applicant would benefit from the commission's view of the increased side yard setback and whether it should apply to this property or not. The existing three-story structure was constructed in 1972 with an approved maximum height of 36 feet, where the maximum allowed is 30 feet. And this is a legal non-conforming condition. The lot is steeply sloped, as I said before, the average slope is 72%, and it descends east from Summit Drive to the rear property line. These two photos are taken from the base of the lot on Spring Trail, and the steepness of the site would affect the perceived and measured height of a structure built on this lot. It's commonplace on a downsloping lot to position the upper level close to the street and stepping each story downhill to follow grade to minimize the height of the structure. And this slide is another three-dimensional exhibit provided by the applicant. It's illustrating the height of the proposed residence. Maximum height is measured from finish grade to an imaginary plane located the allowed number of feet above and parallel to finish grade, so it would undulate in response to the land below it, the maximum allowed height, the plane that's showing. That height limit plane is that, that's the teal on this slide. The portions of the existing residence that would extend beyond maximum allowed height are shown, you know, sticking through the teal colored layer. In the applicant's initial application materials, the height of the home was proposed to be 40 feet and seven inches, and through consultation process with the town, the applicant pushed the garage seven feet closer to the front property line and then reduced the height of the garage and the additions by two feet, four inches, and that reduced the maximum overall height of the residence and all the additions to 36 feet, the same as the existing home, and that's what you're seeing before you this evening. And because the project includes a garage on the upper level, the applicant's ability to further lower, in particular, that portion of the residence is somewhat limited, and the reason is because the elevation of the garage would need to be somewhat similar to the elevation of the street so that a vehicle could maneuver into the garage. And the applicant will speak in greater detail about the height variance that they're requesting and how they're approaching the design relative to our maximum allowed height. Wanted to also talk about the pool. There are site improvements proposed with the project that include the pool and the pool patio. There is a hot tub and a deck surrounding the hot tub, and given the slope of the lot, there's retaining walls that are necessary to accomplish the pool and the pool patio, and they're leveling and building up this area. The walls, to accomplish that, range in height from half a foot to 14 feet in height. Those walls are shown in blue lines on this slide, and then I have the height of the walls measured from the grade at the base of the wall to the top of the wall. Those are the red boxes with the numbers on this slide. The hot tub is located south of the pool, it's on an elevated deck, that's the brown line, and its maximum height is 13 and a half feet in that corner. And then the applicant's proposing terrace wood walls to create planter areas, and that's shown in the green line, and those heights vary because they terrace around the proposed deck and retaining walls to screen them. An English laurel hedge is proposed to be planted inside of those planter walls. This is a rendering of the project shown from Summit Drive, and following that is a rendering from the east, looking at the back of the residence. I added a red line to this slide. To the right of the red line is the existing home, and to the left of the red line are the proposed additions. And there were some written public comments that were received from the owners of 110 Summit Drive, which is just below 208 Summit, and from 171 and 173 Summit Drive, which are across the street to the southeast. The comments were emailed to the planning commission, there are copies on the dais for you and at the back of the room as well, and these comment letters were also posted online to our website in our archive of public correspondence. Each property owner raised some concerns about the project. Generally, they were raised in concerns about the construction schedule and construction hours, construction parking, the stability of the hillside, and the presence of a pool on such a steeply sloped lot. That's all I have this evening, and of course, I'll answer any questions that you have. The applicant and applicant's architect are here to make a presentation and answer your questions as well.
Thank you very much, Tracy. It's a lot of information associated with this, and that being the case, I want to say two things before going to Commissioners. First is just to remember that we're here tonight to talk about policy, planning, and design, essentially, for this thing, per your statement. So, we're talking about these variances, we're talking about the hillside, we're talking about planning and design, but the complications of the project are significant, and your illustrations are good, or applicant's illustrations help clarify this. So, because of that, I want to go to the Commissioners first about those issues, about setbacks, and about the lines of the project. So, I'm going to start over there with you, Valerie. Do you have any questions about just that alone to start out, about the setbacks and the lines?
I do.
Clarification of staff, right?
I do.
All right.
All right. So, my first question would be, if, so, would, do you mind just to give us interpretation in terms of the Cordero Madera definition of the adjacent lot, when the two parcels do not share the edge, but we have the public right-of-way there? So what does it mean when we have the trail, but then, like, does it mean that the public way is a separate property line, and then the setback is not considered to be against the neighbor's property line?
It's, there's a survey as part of the plan set, it is on A1.4, and there's a right-of, I'm sorry, it's not A1.4, it's Sheet 1, right after that, and it's showing kind of that Spring Trail overlaps both of them, which is really commonplace on Christmas Tree Hills. As a matter of fact, the property line for 208 Summit goes all the way to the middle of the right-of-way, so they, the right-of-way is kind of on Christmas Tree Hill, most of the many times, is placed right on top of parcels, and so despite the fact there's a right-of-way there, the property lines touch, and I know it looks, the Marin map image I showed looks like there's a gap there, but I don't know that that's accurate, I would trust the survey that they do have a shared property line, and it's rear to side, and our increased side yard setback is silent as to, do they need to be side-by-side? And the intent is that for side-by-side properties, the side property line setback is small. It's, like I said, it's five feet, six feet, 10 feet in most cases, but a rear property line setback is 35 feet for this particular zone. So what you have is you have a 208 Summit with a 10-foot setback that's lined up with a lot that has a 35-foot setback, so it's an unusual situation that they're not side-by-side, and the increased side yard setback is just, it's silent on whether that's a factor in our decision-making, but interpretation of the zoning ordinance is up to the zoning administrator and the planning commission and legal counsel, really, and if it's silent, it is. And we've tried, made a recent attempt to try to clarify this particular regulation, we changed it last August, to clarify that it applies only if the adjacent lot is lower. So formerly, we were applying it in all cases where the slope is more than 10%, and it, increasing the setback for the lot that's at a lower elevation is not helpful to somebody who's at a higher elevation. Where we want to help the visual impact of taller buildings is for the property that's lower, so we tried to clarify that, and now we maybe we're identifying another way to clarify this in the future, and that's what I'm interested in your feedback on, is whether it should apply to this lot. I know I'm over-answering your question.
No, 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 I think this is helpful, so thank you. And that's exactly where I was going with it, because it seems like the law's till should apply, because, I mean, at least like in my opinion, I feel like it should apply, because there is a, the site is complicated, it does create the valley there, but at the same time, when we're closer to the summit, there is a height difference for the lot. Okay. And then in terms of the other setback questions, are there any other, these type of side-set variances and height variances that have been applied on Christmas Tree Hill in the past 10 years, kind of similar to this?
I know that the only lot that's steeper than this lot, this was part of my staff report, is at 327 Summit, and its average slope is 78%. It was approved in, I want to say the early 2000s, I can't recollect what's in my staff report, but I can look if you want to know, and it was approved at the height of 36 feet with a variance.
And did it have any similar setback issues?
Well, it was close to the front property line, and it doesn't have an increased side yard setback variance, and it utilized the flexible front yard setback to get, to lower it as much as possible, pushing it closer to the street, but that wouldn't be a variance that's a part of Christmas Tree Hill.
So we did not have any side setbacks variances?
We do. 155 Summit was probably six years ago, maybe, and they had received approval for construction of a new home with a variance to this particular regulation, the increased side yard setback.
And we granted for a smaller side?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any more setback questions.
All right, so that's good, I want to get these off the table, but I think what I'm looking at on the map and what I'm hearing is that essentially, the trail does not impact the point of which the setback occurs.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Andrew?
Sorry, Peter, the setback is, setbacks are drawn from?
The property line regardless of the trail.
Except for the roadway.
Okay. Got it.
And net area of land is similarly, similar provision, where you subtract the roadway, but you don't subtract trails.
Okay. All right.
My question has to do with height, and I found the, those 3D images super helpful, given the topography, given everything. My question is, for the portion of the property that exceeds the 30-foot height limit, part of that is the existing structure, right?
Correct.
So is that part grandfathered in relative to the variance?
If they were to, they can maintain a non-conforming structure, they can make repairs to it. It's not that it's grandfathered, it's been approved at that portion, they, what they're doing with the roof, however, right, the roof is moving within the, that height limit, the exceedance of the height limit plane, right? It's, they're flipping the pitch, and so we have required variance approval for something like that. If that's all they were doing, right, the pitch is like this, it's going like this, we would require a variance for that. So yes, that part of the existing building, because they're taking off the whole roof and putting it back on in a different way, above our height limitation, is part of the variance request.
Okay.
And the applicant can discuss that a little bit, because it's, it's, looks, what is exceeding, in some ways, is, it's a reduction to that.
Because the roof is?
Because the pitch is changing, and then you have the additions, which are requiring variance for their mere presence, right, they're new additions, but the roof, in some ways, you could argue that there's portions of the roof that are actually more compliant with our height maximum as a result of the change to the roof, but I'll let the architect talk about that.
And then, just to zoom out a little bit, I'm curious about how it's worked in Cordero Madera in the past relative to height variances. I've done, I do a lot of work in the city, and they just don't allow variances for height. Is that something that's a little more, been a little bit more flexible in Cordero Madera, or what's the?
Not necessarily, I don't think we see them very often whatsoever.
Okay.
I think Christmas Tree Hill, if you ask me where the height variances were granted ever in the town, I'd say on Christmas Tree Hill, and I pointed to a couple examples, there's one on Morning Side Drive around the same time at 327 Summit was granted, but it's not, I would say it's not common. I have not seen an application for a height variance here.
Okay.
The, this particular property, at one point in its history, was granted a height variance for a railing for a deck that, on this, at 208 Summit, so they, a small, I would characterize it as small for a deck railing.
Go ahead.
Ready at the site.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Margaret, over to you about questions for these issues of setbacks and lines.
I have some questions, sort of on the same line, but I'd like the staff and possibly the attorney to define a legal non-conforming condition, a definition of it.
The definition of a legal non-conforming structure is a structure that would have been legal when it was constructed, but doesn't conform now because the law since changed, in this case, to forbid structures of this height. Now, under town code, and I believe under code of most municipalities, you can maintain the existing structure, repair it, et cetera, but you cannot expand the non-conforming, non-conformity of the structure, nor can you build something different as in what they're doing, propose to do now.
And so, when, well, let me assess it. well, let me ask this. Do you know why, this, to the staff, thank you. Um, do you know why it was uh, allowed in the past, the 36 feet?
Yeah, it's not super clear. Um, the permit was um, approved by the Board of Adjustments in 1972. And the stamp plan um, shows a building height of 36 feet. And they also approved the front setback variance because there were no Christmas Tree Hill regulations at that time. Um, those were adopted in 1994. Um, so I would say it, with the adoption of Christmas Tree Hill, it probably conforms now to front setback. I don't know why it was granted. There's, record is very brief um, in regards to to this. It's um, there's no resolution of approval at that time. The Board of Adjustments would hold a hearing um, and the minutes provide the record of the vote at that, at that meeting.
So as I understand it, there's going to be, maybe I'm not understanding, but um, the part of the proposed addition is going to be on the same level as the garage?
There is, yeah, there's a um, on the upper level is the new two car garage.
Right.
And next to it is the front entry um, and uh, and a part of a living area addition that um, will be dedicated to the new kitchen.
And that's new, not currently there?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's a shaded area on the upper level floor plan um, that might help you to understand what they're adding on the upper level. Um, look at uh, A 2.2.
Mm-hmm.
And those, the existing building is just white and the shaded area is the additions to living area and the garage at that level.
Right. And so is that piece allowed to be at the same level, the height of the garages?
Oh, anything that's over 30 feet, anything that's over 30 feet requires a variance.
So that piece has to be kind of stepped down from what's currently there?
If, if that's the guidance from the commission, that, that you couldn't make findings for that piece. And the applicant can explain their rationale behind this particular design and why the, all of the street level um, additions are at that um, height. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, um. Okay, I get it. Then the other thing is um, in this uh, in the chart that, that you sent in uh, response to Peter's question, I noticed that there are a number of permits here given for erosion and sediment control. Was that a problem on that site?
That's standard for any hillside lot that's got any sort of grading activity for a foundation or for retaining walls or um, that's standard requirement.
Has a survey, is there a survey in the record that's ever been done of that uh, the stability of that hillside?
They will have to provide geotechnical report, soils report, um, civil plans and structural plans for a project like this.
So it wasn't part of these previous permits?
Um, I haven't looked at that. I can look at that before they're, they come back to you. Um, most likely these permits are pretty, pretty simple. They probably have um, some civil sheets. I, I would expect that. But I can look into that.
And uh, given the previous uh, issue we've had with a similar, not a similar property, but a property on a steep hillside, is that the only egress? Is that structure that on summit? The only way that people could get out in a fire is coming up to summit.
They could um, traverse downhill. Spring Trail goes from Summit all the way down to Lower Summit Road. Um, and so if somebody leaving the site could traverse by foot um, downhill, yes. And sorry, I'm backing up the architect for um, more than one of those previous projects. This is the same architect. He may be able to speak about the hillside stability from previous projects tonight.
And, and just um, who generally uses that path? Is it just like residents in the area? Is it?
Yeah, yeah. And when I was there, Public Works was um, cleaning it of debris. But it's, it's open. There's no gate at the bottom and, or at the top. And some neighboring property owners are on this call with our Zoom. They, they may know. And the owner's here too. He can tell you who's, who's regularly using it.
Okay, um, I will just comment. Uh, that's one of the, um, the exercise paths up and down the hill. People go up that pathway a lot um, to use it.
The general public.
It's a, it's a terrible stair climb.
It is.
Go do it, right?
Oh, there are stairs. It's not. It's a stair hill.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, I don't know that there's any more stairs anywhere else in Corder Madera than that path right there.
At least has a railing.
It's, and I watched a guy pause twice. So, yeah, anyway, it's a, it's a climb. Okay, Dan.
Thank you. Um, it's a little bit complicated. So Tracy, could you go back over um, the, what's happening with the roof pitch and how that affects both the height variance and the side yard variance?
Um, how best can I talk about this?
I think I heard you said that if the height was kept to 30 feet, the side yard variance would be less. Side yard setback would be less based on current code?
Uh, so I think you're asking about the increased side yard setback and how that relates to the height of the building. Is that right?
That's correct.
Um, so there's some work that we do to figure out what is the increased side yard setback? Because buildings sometimes have different facets as they run down the side yard. Um, and in this case, sort of, if the building was completely uniform and um, then we would just, what's the maximum height at the side yard? And do the math and, and set it back. Um, and as you lower that building height, you can get closer to the setback because your ratio is, is changing. Am I making any sense?
Yeah, so.
So if they were to lower it only a foot, they, they probably would still be encroaching into the increased side yard setback. It would just be, the increase would be less every um, two feet that they remove from the, from the building.
So if they, if, if the plan came back and there was no height to the new additions over 30 feet, what would that side yard setback be?
Um, it would be 30 minus 12 is, is 18 divided by 2 would be an increase of nine feet.
Nine feet?
Correct.
Where it's required to be 10?
It's be, 19 feet would be required where underlying on a flat lot is 10.
10, okay.
That makes sense.
Uh, and 19 instead of 22 then?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then could you go back over what's happened with these roof planes that are shifting? I understand the garage slope is changing. Right, right now it slopes towards the street and it's going to change the slope.
The garage is new and it's pitched so that the high side is at the street. Um, and the um, the main building will be pitched in the same manner. Where right now it's, it's opposite. So right now the high side of the building is to the back of the house. The height of the shed roof of the existing home. And after this, they'll, they'll take off the whole roof and build the garage with the pitch facing the high point at the street. And then rebuild the roof for the main residence with the pitch facing the street.
So are you saying that the garage height, roof height and pitch is affecting the height of the, of the first floor addition?
I, um, I'm saying that the finished floor elevation of the garage um, is informing the overall height of the building. Um, because the finished floor of the garage needs to be somewhat similar to the street elevation. Um, so that you can maneuver a car into the garage. If you lower the, the, there's a limit to what you can lower the height of the garage. And in fact, the, the face of the garage, the, the front facade of the garage is compliant with the height limitations. If you refer to, take a look while I'm talking at um, the age, age 11 of their um, the three dimensional diagrams, this one. So the, the face of the garage is underneath that blue layer. Right? It's the back part as the lot drops away from the street and from the front, it's, it drops off like a cliff that that back of the garage, even though it's lower than the front, is exceeding our height limitation.
Okay.
Dan, I'll point you to A 3.4 and that drawing shows the existing garage pointed away, right? And the new garage has moved back to the street and pointed the opposite direction.
Existing home, there's no garage.
But it doesn't sound like the garage roof height or slope is affecting what they want to do for the other part of the roof on the main floor.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and again, it's the, it's the back of the roof, right, that, that's exceeding the height limitation, not, not the part at the street.
Right.
Because of the topography.
Right. Um, so um, if you, if you don't know, or you can make an estimate, how many homes in, within 300 feet exceed the 30 foot height limit?
I don't know, but that's something that I can um, that would take some research into each of these property files to see if we have information about their overall height. And we wouldn't necessarily have that for some of the older homes that haven't been improved.
Or do you have a, you have a guess on it?
I don't.
No.
I don't. It would take, it would take some research. That's something that I, I think I, I could bring back to the commission um, uh, for another hearing on this item. And it's, but it would take some research to, to do that. And I, guessing, guessing would be a guess, yeah.
There was a, a comment letter that referred to owl habitat during construction, possible disruption during construction. Do we have any information about owls nesting in that neighborhood?
Not yet, but that's something that we would look at. We haven't required a wildlife survey for residential construction projects. We, we have added it as a condition of approval um, for certain projects that include tree removal. Um, nevertheless, this applicant would need to comply with federal and state law related to um, Migratory Bird Treaty Act and whatnot. Um, but there has been a condition of approval that we've added just to a, a tree permit that requires um, a wildlife survey. And that's, that's usually done by a biologist. Um, and it, it's usually if we have reason to believe that there's a protected species in the area. Um, there are maps that we can consult um, uh, closer to the time of construction. That can look at, at whether or not that, that owl, a protected owl is in the area.
And I just want to confirm, they don't plan to do any tree removal?
Um, at this time, there's not um, any trees proposed to be removed.
Um, and then um, can you speak to uh, anything that Stanford Commission has done relative to construction management in this very constrained one lane, two lane road? Uh, and particularly relative to days of the week, hours of the day in this, in, in Christmas Tree Hill particularly?
Yeah, there, it would be within the commission's purview to um, you know, modify construction hours or use of heavy equipment um, through conditions of approval. We have done that. Um, with every um, project of this scale, a construction management plan is required as a condition of approval. And that's submitted to the planning staff um, and public works staff who review that and require adherence to it. Code enforcement um, is involved in enforcement of construction management plans. Um, construction management plan includes um, where, where is the job site toilet? Where are materials supplied? Where is heavy equipment used and stored? Um, when and how are deliveries made to the site um, and construction hours? Um, and construction parking for workers.
Yeah, but I'm, I understand that, but I'm asking particularly in Christmas, Christmas Tree Hill in this area, what have we done in the past? For example, no construction on Saturday or no construction before 9:00 AM? Or just some examples of how, what we've done?
Um, I would have to look at different approvals that we've had up there. But I, I know that we've limited, um, removed Sunday construction, for instance, also that there's a break for people. I think we may have done that for 800 Corder Madera Avenue. And we have, it's by default that there's no construction on a federal holiday. I don't recall anything specific as far as specific construction hours that we've decided to limit. But that's something if you're interested, interested in for this particular project, project, which is obviously going to be logistically difficult. Um, I could come up with some examples of um, the requirements we've placed that are outside of our, our normal noise ordinance requirements. Um, and give you some examples uh, at a future hearing of what those look like.
That would be helpful when we get to that. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. I will just add that in the last number of years, I don't recall that we did anything up there other than the Sunday hours or talk about large trucks on, in a few instances. Otherwise, I don't recall anything being changed for uh, construction limitations. The idea was to get it over with as quickly as possible. Right. So um, and that just draws it out some, but uh, anyway, um, for my part, does anybody know when this lot line was drawn? It's crazy.
1906, probably. That's, that's the main Corder Madera Woods subdivision map is around then. But yes, it's, it's crazy.
Got this crazy foot down at the bottom. How does that affect anything? It's just the craziness down there?
If they were developing anywhere close to that, I think we would look, have to decide carefully like where, what's, where a setback's drawn. But I think if, if they were to draw in a rear yard setback, we would just, you know, skip that part.
Right, right. And that's what I interpret from.
It almost looks like it, it is a separate parcel because the lot lines come so close to one another at the bottom.
And you're, they're paying taxes on that too. Um, so anyway, um, so I, I, I get all of the uh, configurations that you've presented. They're very helpful. Uh, to Dan's question about the uh, main living roof in that area. Um, it is uh, some of it is existing now. No, it's not. It will, it's added. All that living roof is added. So, um.
The, there's some sections and elevations that show a dash line of the existing building that may help the commissioners. Um, there.
Mentioned that, but I think that the living is, yeah, the living is uh, existing building outlined dashed. Um, okay, I get it now. Yeah. So it's an improvement to the angle, but um, it sticks up differentially, but still some, okay. All right. So we'll come back to commissioners for other questions here of staff. Do you have anything? Dan, you got your full boat of questions in there. Uh, Valerie, do you have anything else you want to talk to staff about before we go to the applicant?
I just have uh, one question in regards to the um, fire hazard in that area. Um, so would the fire department require any turnarounds on the summit drive there? Um, because it's such a narrow street and it is a two-way street.
I talked to the fire department about the closeness of the garage to this, right, to the street, to the paved area of the street. Um, because it had, had moved seven feet closer as part of this um, designer view process. Um, and they don't, they don't have, they have not required any widening of the roadway um, as part of this project. They would like to avoid encroachments um, into the paved area, obviously, and this applicant's not proposing that. The residence has fire sprinklers and the, the fire department comments were, um, they've approved it with conditions to add to it. And none of, none of which were to widen the roadway.
Mm-hmm. So they don't have any issues with the garage uh, as it proposed?
No, it's, it's nine feet from the right of way. Um, the right of way is only 15 feet wide. And so to acquire land or acquire an easement beyond what is the width of the right of way is not something that they can ask for um, for all, from all of these properties, all the way up summit.
Right.
It's the fire code officials stated that, yeah, fifteen feet, if, when creating the subdivision, fifteen feet wide right of way is not acceptable. It's got to be twenty. But it was nineteen oh six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a sense. And, um, other question is in terms of the, um, uh, taller retaining walls. Especially the ones that are by the pool, um, because they're higher than five feet. Is there's any, um, concerns that it would impact the views of the, I guess, like hundred seventy summit? You have the neighbors.
I haven't heard any commentary from that individual. Um, I think that's something maybe we could install a story pole at that location. If it, if it remains fourteen feet high, that's, that's a really tall, um, built up area of the yard. Normally not seeing them that tall. But it, it's the steepness of the lot is so great that it goes from half a foot at the, the side of the pool that's nearest the property line to fourteen feet at the other corner. I think it's eleven by thirty two, the pool. So.
It's like a building in itself.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate that. Most views are directed to the east. Um, one seventy summit is kind of rotated. But I think we could, we could be clear either with story poles or through the applicant's neighbor outreach to be sure that that aspect of the project is, um, explained to anybody who may have concerns with it.
All right. Thank you. I don't have additional.
Yeah, those walls are a long way from the house. We'll dwarf the pool. Okay. Hey, Andrew, any other questions for staff at this point?
Nope.
Okay, Margaret, nothing else. Okay. So in the audience, it looks like we had, um, Deborah, I guess, but she's out now. So who's going to talk on behalf of the applicant here?
Got my slides. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, uh, council, uh, commission members and planning staff. We, we've met with Tracy many times to make sure that the information was clear. And, uh, we dealt with all the planning issues and she helped us understand them all and helped make sure our smittle was complete. So thank you, Tracy, for helping us out with that. Uh, my name's Christian Oaks. I'm the architect. Tonight here is Hector Colina, the owner. Debbie couldn't make it tonight, his wife. She's a, um, emergency room doctor and she had a shift tonight. Hector and Debbie and their family have lived on Christmas Tree Hill since nineteen eighty eight. They moved away for a brief period and then came back. We, uh, and raised three children here and now they're grandparents and, um, Hector is a steel fabricator who builds seismic frames and much other steel elements. And, uh, he is very interested in the safety of this house and that it's, uh, constructed well. We know that it's a steep site and that's driven the design that I'll explain here in a minute. The current home is is very small. It comes in at nineteen hundred square feet, but that includes crawl space and a three story staircase. It's really more like about twelve hundred square feet. Every room is small in this house. If you could go to the next slide. Parking is also an issue here. There is no garage. And, uh, you can pack four cars in here, but, uh, it's really pretty tight and we really want to improve this situation. And we're, this is a priority here and I, I, I believe in working with Corin Madera over the years that this is a priority on Christmas Tree Hill to really improve parking and get the cars a little bit more off the street. If you go to the next slide, uh, the house really has no entry. You come down a staircase from that parking deck you just saw through a door. And, uh, these are two of the primary things that they would really like to do to improve this house. Is, is the entry and a garage that allows better parking in front of the garage. And the garage is sort of driving this whole expansion because you really, to get a garage on this site, you have to exceed the height limit. And, uh, to make it work with summit, you get into this side yard step back, which we really feel like doesn't apply to this site as, as I will also help, help, help you see. If you go to the next shot, there's, there's a picture on page fifty eight in Tracy's report that has the same exact angle. What I'm showing here is that the site is really heavily screened by trees and we're not taking any trees out. If you go to the next shot, actually it's a little bit further in here. We'll come back to these, but if you go down a couple more shots, one more, two, another one. Next, the last one, I guess, after this one, you'll see, oh, no, one more, sorry. Uh, you'll see that the view from the road as you come up, you don't, either way, you barely see this house. It really is not visible from from the neighbors, from the road or from the valley, um, this addition. In two thousand twelve, Hector did a complete seismic upgrade on the house and put in fire sprinklers to make it safe. At that point in time, and this is for Margaret, um, we had a complete geotech report done because he was going to rebuild the carport and put in a pier and grade beam foundation. It was all approved. And, uh, and since then, we have brought in another geotech who's working with us on the site and they all believe the site is very safe. So we do have a geotech report. It's actually on file with the city, Tracy, that we can reproduce for you. When Hector and Debbie would like, this is their program. Uh, they would like a two car garage. A nice inviting entry. And this is what I'm trying to show in the first slide, if you want to go all the way back to that, but you don't need to. They, they need a dining room. Right now, the living room has a dining room table in it. It's so small. They both need to work at home a little bit. They need a little bit more room in their bedrooms. And they also have relatives that they're taking care of and they really want a fourth bedroom that can act as an au pair. And the way the design develops really for this property is that the only entry is this south, slightly east corner of the site where you come in, where you'd have to build the garage. And if you build it high enough for the road, that far corner, really the far side of the garage is what pops into the height limit. None, just kind of the downhill side. And the purpose of redirecting the roof is right now the roof is fighting the slope of the hill. By rebuilding the roof in the slope of the hill, we, we actually can get it to, to blend in with the hill better and bring the lower side down about two feet. But by the time it gets out to the garage, you get back to thirty six feet again, just to get an eight foot plate at the far end of the garage with the, with the slope where you're not hitting bottom with your car getting into the garage. Improving parking on Christmas Tree Hill is, is really, really huge, I think, for everybody in town, the owners and, and, and the city. And what happens when you build this garage is you end up with a big void underneath. And that's the perfect place to add this additional bedroom. It's, it's almost unnoticedable. It's really a reverse build under the garage, which is what they really, really need. So I just wanted to, um, Tracy, if you could go to, let's see, go back. Uh, go, let's see, one more. Okay, this is a good image to, to show you this. If you can see, uh, the, just explain the model. The blue is the site and, and the light gray is the setbacks. And the current design does not go through the setbacks. But when you go to the next slide, that's the step back, the step back, which is questionable for this site really is, is what goes into these corners of the roof. If you go to the next slide, this explains that why we feel this is, this is not appropriate is because the site next door really is not a downslope. If you go to the, and, and here's the wording of, of what we're questioning. If you go to the next slide, this is the topography. You can see between two oh eight and one seventy. It's, it's just a kind of like a little creek, like, uh, sort of a gully. The other side goes up on the other side. And if you go to the next picture, this is an aerial looking down at the house and the, this sort of gully. Sunny spot is where we want to build and you can see the road to the left is uphill. So you never have this situation where somebody's going to build on that side of the site. And, and so the step back has, uh, really kind of impeded the garage a little bit. And that's why we're asking for a variance for that. If you go, let's see, what's the next slide? Uh, yeah, now what I just wanted to show you here is this is, this, this is the side of the house that the step back impacts. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see that the trees screen this whole side of the house. So that it really doesn't have much impact on a neighbor. There's no house there in that area. And no, and the house on that side is built from the bottom. Some houses are built from, it's because summit is switchbacks are built from the bottom and this, our, uh, two oh eight is built from the top. So if you go to the next slide in summary, oh, this, this just shows the height, which, which is kind of unavoidable here. We, we've done a lot to improve the height variance. But we really need that uh, because of the steepness. The square footage is again, for this are going to seem really high because there's a lot of crawl space that's not going to get used. Um, and then just to wrap up in summary, uh, we really feel like this designs provides significant visual and functional improvement for the neighborhood with much improved parking. We really appreciate you support, your support on this design because, uh, we really like to accomplish this. Hector's here.
Please step up and contribute here. Yeah.
Hello, I'm, I'm Hector Colina. I, I'm the, uh, one of the, my wife and I own the property on two oh eight summit. And, um, I know, I don't know if you noticed, my grandson was here earlier. And, uh, my daughter, I have two daughters and a grandson living with us. So there's five of us in the house. And there's only three, three bedrooms. And, uh, so that's why we want the fourth bedroom. And, um, but with, on the expansion on the, on the living area, we're just going flat. We're not, we're not stepping, stepping it up. So the garage is at a higher level than the living area. So, um, and, um, at first I was, we wanted to, we were thinking about more, more cars, uh, of three car garage. And then we decided to eliminate one and push the house over so we can make it wider. And, and we try to keep all the living areas below at, at, try to step it like Chris was saying. As to a fire hazard, um, I, when, when, since I bought it, bought it, I sprinkle, I voluntarily, uh, sprinkled the house. I also, um, voluntarily seismic the house. And then, um, that's when I first remodeled the kitchens and the bathrooms. Then when we moved in, I, I added the lowest floor and that's where we got the, um, ge, ge, um, the report and structural engineer and arch, and architect. So we, we've done everything, everything, um, to quote, to permits. So, um, we, I, 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 like I, like, uh, Chris said, I moved into Christmas Tree Hill in nineteen eighty eight. And, um, I, I, I'm, I've always built in San Francisco and on hills. So I'm used to building on hills. That's all, that's all you have. You know, since I was twenty years old, I was building and, um, grew up building and, um, and it was always, um, so I know how to build. We always have a, get a, we need to get a geolot, you know, you guys know that. That's part of the requirements, but the part, the problem with this house is narrow because if you go deeper, it's, it gets higher. So it's very narrow. So you have to go to the side and you, you don't have any, any room because you're, you got the the limit of your front setback and you have the limit of your back setback. So you're very limited on this, on this particular property because of the steepness. So, um, I, I want to thank, uh, the commissioner for, for holding this up, play millenary hearing. We really, really appreciate and, um, hope you consider our, our project. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. The pool, to me, the pool is a good, a good, especially in a fire zone. A source of water. It's a good reservoir where the, to put out fires, you know, so thanks.
Thank you, Hector. Appreciate your commentary. That comprises everything from the applicant. You guys have anything else or, oh, this gentleman.
Good afternoon, commissioners, uh, commission chair. My name is Nick Colina. Um, I'm the CFO of Ankle Iron and Construction. Um, we're a third generation family owned, uh, seal company. We've been building in the Bay area for over sixty years. Um, our work includes many projects like this sort of Castro Theater, uh, SFO Terminal Three, um, the new water treatment plant on Treasure Island. While our focus is commercial construction, we've completed, completed many numerous high end projects in Tiburon, Belvedere and Ross. So we understand, uh, strict regulations, um, and building on, on hills. We built on Belvedere on the backside, uh, where you're viewing, um, the Golden Gate Bridge. And, um, it was a tough one, but we abided by all the regulations and, um, it was a successful project. So we're, we're both general contractors and we're structural steel contractors. Uh, we understand construction, uh, especially structural construction at the highest level. I'm going to take a moment to reassure the commission that this project, uh, will be built with the same expertise, professionalism and adherence to proper soil reports, inspections and safety standards that we've, we've upheld for six decades. I also want to speak, um, I also, um, uh, would like to talk a little bit about, um, just some of the concerns about, uh, building in, in these tough environments. We built, um, in the most stringent jurisdictions like Belvedere. And we've met every code requirement, every regulation and, and, and every expectation that is set before us. Regarding part property values, it's well understood that high quality construction improves the value, value of both project and the surrounding community. And so like many we've built before, we enhance the value of nearby homes as well. On the topic of the pool, there already, um, exists pool, there already are pools on Christmas Tree Hill. So I'm unsure why this one should be. So I'm unsure why this one should be treated any differently. Beyond increasing the property value, the pool has a practical benefit. We live in a fire prone area. And in the event of a hillside fire, a water resource could be provided directly to support firefighters. In closing, I want to express that we are a great family. We care deeply about the work that we do. And we know how to build responsibly, safely and with respect for the community. And I respectfully urge commission to move forward with this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, you've heard from these three gentlemen. Commissioners, do you have any questions for them? I'll ask you, Valerie, if you have something you want to ask these guys, since they've given us a presentation.
I think just my only question would be in terms of the, like for the future reference, it would be nice to see the solar study diagram to understand the shading, the mass of the current design, would, how it would affect the public right of way and other areas there. I understand that it's not really accessible area, so it might be okay, but it still would be valid for us to see something like that. And then the other question in terms of the height and the setbacks. So have you considered the design where you would commit to a larger setback? We understand the complications of the area that you have there and we, we see it. But it seems like there are only few parts of the building that are kind of protruding into the setback specifically. You're asking for a 10 foot variance where there is 22 foot minimum. But is there, were there any studies done by you guys that would, would have a larger setback on those sides, especially in the south one?
If you want to step up and answer that, Christian, at all, that would be helpful.
What you'd like to understand with the solar study? Because I don't think you're going to see much here with all the trees. And I mean, we've got a model, we can do it, but you, I don't think you're going to see much. We're not going to be shading any other structure.
Well, the structure gotten larger, so it would be nice to see if it impacts any, anything neighboring. Especially like for the neighbors that specifically send the letters of concern. So any, any type of, you know, enlarged mass might have an effect. And it would be just nice to see like what effect would that have?
And regarding setback, you're talking about only the side yard? Or are you talking about this front yard?
Side yards, yeah.
Side only?
Yeah, I think I understand the front yards and then it's reasonable, at least in my eyes. So I feel like that's a reasonable request and in terms of the height as well. But there is, you know, a consequence, right? Like you, you kind of requesting the variance in height. If you would have kept the height at what is allowable in Cort Madera, 30, right? This, the size, a setback would be also smaller. But since you are asking for a larger height, right? Like where, where's that meeting? Because now like the setback to the side is very small to where the law would require to have a minimum of 22 feet. So I was wondering if there is such a necessity, like whether you've done any studies where it shows less of a setback there?
The, the intrusion into that step back is an angle. So the growth is a lot that we'd have to adjust. And it would make the current garage unparkable. It'd be a one car garage instead of a two car garage, for example. Because we would lose probably nine, eight or nine feet at that angle.
If there is a way to, to create step backs on the house that would kind of steep up so that you're keeping the garage, but then you kind of study how the other levels, you know, just not encroaching as much on the setback.
We in working with staff, we did push the garage towards Summit, which helped quite a bit height wise and step back. That to push it further would likely lose a parking stall in one way or another, which we feel is the most important thing to hang on to almost. It's, it's very difficult with that step back. We are within the setback. It's a vertical line.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. The sacrifice for what is gained for any neighbors is not desirable.
And in terms of the parking, so you've showed the existing images where there are four cars parked. So your expectations are to have a two car garage and then have two cars parked.
Right, there's room for two in front still, but they're further off the road a little bit.
Right, okay, okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Valerie. Margaret, do you have any questions for these gentlemen?
And it may be a repetitive question, but I'm going to answer it, ask it anyway. You stated that, well, help me understand why the garage has to exceed the height limit. You said that is absolutely essential, that the garage exceeds the height limit. And I still don't understand why it has to exceed the height limit.
I'm going to interrupt and before you get up there, Christian, do you guys have a slide that shows the section of the building that we can point to while Christian gets up and answers this question at all? I think it might help explain it, what's going on with height and the slope of the hill.
Are you asking for a building section?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, give us a second to pull up the plan set.
It's a page A 3.4 and in it, we, 3.5. Oh, that's a, that's a longitudinal section to the house. But 3.4 shows the 30 foot slope of the hill. And you can see that stacking on that steep of a hill is very difficult. Right?
We're pulling that up now, Peter.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, that's the section X2 goes through the garage. And it shows that we would have to lower the plate to about three foot high in the corner. Which you, you might be able to park a car in there, but it's not a, a standard garage.
So Margaret, I'm just hoping to help this illuminate your view of that 30 foot height and then what they're sticking out past that 30 foot height. And when you stack things on a steep hillside like that, it's very hard to get a, much of a floor plan footprint. So I'll let Christian explain that any more than I have.
So the only way to not exceed the height limit that the town has set is to maintain what you have.
And achieve a two, two.
Not, not put up a garage there, is that it?
What would happen is that second parking space would be more like an open deck as opposed to putting a conventional garage.
Is that correct? What you have there now is an open deck, right?
Currently, right. And currently it's, it's just not a good situation for getting groceries in on a rainy day. You don't have that typical residential convenience we're trying to achieve.
Can I pause this just for one second? Because the drawing that Margaret's looking at is not the most current one. This is the most current one. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but since the previous iteration, you've moved the garage closer to the street, which lessens the portion of the garage that's actually exceeding the height limit, correct? So the drawing she has, has red, red notes on?
Yeah, there's an attachment to the staff report. That's the exhibit of the proposed addition before they lowered it and pushed it closer to the street.
This actually, this is better, this helps this height versus this.
And this is the piece that's exceeding it.
This piece right here. No, this triangle. Which is a lot smaller than, that's okay, actually. But they've got eight foot, eight foot floor to ceiling at the back wall of the garage, right on the interior.
That's a standard plate.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just clarifying. So it's actually this, this triangle versus what was previously here. So it's, it's a bit less.
And it all, it all is helped by changing the roof slope.
Yeah.
For the house.
Does that help clarify it, Margaret, what's going on?
But, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It is three dimensional though. It is a triangular shape. But in this case, to make it look nice, you might have to run it the full width of the car.
It's a bigger discussion about steep lots and 30 foot heights. They, they cause problems with steep lots and you try and get 30 foot height at any one point and you're limited by how much floor area you get within that 30 foot height. It's just, happens with steeper lots.
It's, it's an effort to try to keep it conventional construction, not come up with some trapezoidal cuts in it to meet a requirement that we're not sure the neighbors are going to benefit from.
So when we have to make findings about a variance, there's one that says the variance or adjustment will not constitute a grant of special privilege and is consistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classification. And I don't know how I could make that finding. So could you explain that to me?
To, to have a two car garage. To be able to have a two car garage.
Excuse me?
You're saying, say, speak louder, please, what you just said.
Just to be able to have a two car garage, which most houses do these days.
Okay. Anne, do you have anything you want to ask this gentleman?
You, you said that you were improving the parking, but isn't there a two car deck there now?
Correct.
How are you improving the parking situation?
To have a garage.
Well, that doesn't improve it, it doesn't provide more parking. You may be improving it for the people who live there, but you're not providing more parking, is that correct?
Make sure you use the mic.
Step up to the mic, please.
This is Hector. We're adding the two, two car garage and also because of the setback, we're able to park two cars in the front legally.
Can you park two cars in the front now?
They're, they're in the street.
I mean, you're, you're.
They're not legal.
The deck is further east, you're moving the garage further west, but you're creating more space between the garage and the street.
Correct.
I, I don't understand that, doesn't make any sense.
Because, because the garage, the garage is, is set back further than the, the back of the, 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 the front of the garage. It'll be further back than the, than the back of our cars on the car, car deck now.
Okay.
So then it allows for.
So when it was said that you were moving the garage forward, you don't mean compared to the deck? You mean compared to some previous plan you submitted?
We, yes.
Correct.
Yes, we had submitted a previous plan and it had a 41 foot height, height. So then we, we got together with Tracy and we moved it up seven feet so that it would make it to 36. And then we lowered the existing house where the, the existing house, we lowered the back two feet four. And, and then on the roof, on the roof, yeah. And then, and then pitched it this way so that, because the hill goes this way also. So if we would have gone straight over, we would have gone over the 36. So we, we've been trying to maintain the 36 feet that we originally had. And as you know, it's so narrow, the, I mean, it's so steep that we were, were, were stuck between the front setbacks and the back setbacks and the, and the height limit.
Okay, then I have a question for Christian.
Go ahead.
You said to get a garage on this site requires the height variance. So if you didn't have a garage, you wouldn't require a height variance?
We would still need it for the house.
So, so that wasn't exactly correct.
It, it's, the house is enlarging a little bit as well to get that, that living room, a decent dining room and an entry. And that does push the garage a little further into that corner. And that's what widens the space in front of the garage. So it makes, you could, you're able to put cars in there off the road. So it is a triangular exercise, yeah.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay. Andrew, do you have any questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, just a couple. I think relative to the parking thing, not the garage parking, but the parking in front of the garage. I think it would help if you put, showed us cars.
Two cars, yeah.
The other thing.
I did on one of the plans.
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm looking at A 1.3. The other thing that would be super helpful is if you, for the adjacent parcels, if you put the addresses of those in there. Because I was looking at these letters and trying to sync up.
We do have a, a three foot, 300 foot radius diagram I provided to planning with all the addresses on it and.
But in your plans, it could, it could be in a lot of the sheets.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
We do show the house down the hill.
Right. But I don't even see an address there.
It's on the site plan. Okay.
So comment, because I'm, I'm looking at this page 10, which shows this blue plane and the portions of the building that would exceed the required side yard setback, if in fact that is what's applied. And it occurs to me, I don't usually spend too much time diving into the floor plans, but what does occur to me is that a lot of that on sheet A 2.4 is for bedroom four and it's for living space in bedroom four. When I first looked at this floor plan for this level, I thought that that was the master or the primary bedroom, but I see that that's on the next level. Seems like there's quite a bit of work to add to that wedge of space in bedroom four, which actually constitutes most of what's encroaching into that side setback.
We're, if you, if you look at the, sort of the southeast corner, we're putting a separate entry into that.
Oh, I see that.
And there's a little staircase that comes down the side and that, that little corner helps pick up that entry. Makes a nice little entry down there, which in the, in the truce, in the vertical setbacks is really hidden and, and within the setbacks. It, it got hit by the step back. Otherwise, I mean, you'd hardly even know it was there.
But you could still, I'm just saying, if you could still have that entry, even if that portion of the plan didn't extend so far to the side. even if that portion of the plan didn't extend so far to the south.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it, but it might end up going under the, the garage.
Right. Yeah, just, just a thought, just a comment.
Which we didn't want to do, if we could avoid it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. So on the diagram that is in the staff report showing the neighboring lot with the, uh, contour lines going up and away, I think that it would help if you were able to show the fact that there isn't really a downhill side from your lot. It's all uphill from your lot. There isn't a fall-off at all.
There's a little bit of fall-off, and then it comes back up again.
Right, so some kind of section would be demonstrative of that to show what's happening with your projected design and that setback would be helpful in understanding the why, the wherefore of, uh, this, uh, infringement into that setback and the new, and the regulation for that height. On, uh, A2.8, um, is that all skylight on that, uh, proposed roof or over the garage, or are those skylights over the?
Solar.
That's solar on top of that garage roof, yeah. Okay. Um, the rest of the configurations, uh, rectangles are skylights in the house. Is that right?
Yes, right.
All right.
Solar on the garage.
Yeah. All right. And the winding staircases coming down are just another form of easy access? Or are they in some way required, um, outside the building?
Those are existing.
They're what?
They're existing.
They're existing, oh, okay. Got it. All right, so we've drawn down enough here for quite a while. Okay, we've got more people questions, okay. Dan?
Yeah. Why did you choose to do the addition on the south side and not the north side?
There is a really beautiful patio built on the north side that Hector has spent many years building. And, uh, the south side is the only access for the garage. See, you have to build it there. And then it, it creates this void underneath it uh, that is perfect for expanding the house under the garage. So it makes, it's the natural.
But it could be possible to do the addition on the north side. That would avoid the, uh, side yard setback issue, except for a little triangle of the garage.
It, yeah, it doesn't really help with the garage. And then you've got a lot more structure on the site.
Okay.
It's going to be much more massive adding to both sides.
Okay, Margaret, you had a question?
Yeah, um, once a permit is issued, what do you see as a timeline for this project?
That's a question for Hector.
Two years. Two years.
Two years?
Two years, yeah, unless otherwise. Huh?
Lot of site work, I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's two, two continuous years?
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah. The, it's going to be a full, full-on crew for two years, Monday through Friday. And, and I'll do cleanup and, um, on the weekends, on, on Saturday. Yeah, and I don't want to work Sundays and, and holidays at all.
So you would.
I'm 70 years old.
Days a week for two years?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, except holidays, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we're going to ask Claire if she's got anybody with hands up or, uh, making a public comment on this item. I didn't provide the viewers much warning, so they might take a minute to put their hands up.
Yeah, I have some hands coming up now. Um, Yi, I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself.
Oh, and I, am I unmuted? Yes, okay. Um, just a comment on the architect's photo of the street-side view into 208 Summit. A lot of those trees actually came down two winters ago. So 208 Summit is actually in full view for anybody that is neighbors living around and walking, driving through. So just commenting on accuracy of that photo in terms of the current state.
Okay, thank you. And we'll get a respondent from, about that from the applicant. Um, anyone else?
Travis, I see you have your hand up and allow you, I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I submitted my, my concerns via email, so I don't know if that's been distributed and, or if it will be read out loud already, but I would just take the moment to reiterate if that's, if you feel like that's necessary.
Uh, we have that in front of us. Um, if you care to use up your three minutes in any way to say any of those concerns, you certainly can.
Okay, um, yeah, just reiterating the concern is around, uh, the timeline of the project being limited. Hector mentioned a year and a half. He's, he's saying two years in, in the meeting there, which, which seems, you know, probably reasonable. Uh, but I just wanted to get probably clarity on like what happens if it doesn't finish in two years? How's that going to be handled? Uh, because I'm just concerned about it kind of ongoing. And then, um, yeah, just the work on Saturdays and Sundays. I think I heard him mention about doing cleanup on, on Saturdays, and I don't know if that's still going to be, you know, noisy. So, um, that's the only concern is around just maybe limiting Saturday or work on Saturdays and just noise. That's, that's the main concern. Um, and then the parking in, for his crew, uh, if there's a way to, to not have them be using the public spaces that are in the area, which are extremely limited. I think that's my main concerns and the, yeah, just, just to reiterate what Yi's mentioned that we, yeah, the big, a big bay tree fell down, so his house is pretty visible for us. Sorry, you, what's his name? Yeah, then just, I'm assuming he's getting the parking requirements for the size of the house, but, um, yeah, he's adding bedrooms. And so there's going to be more probably parking needs beyond the, the spaces that he has there. So that's the only concern, but I don't know if there's anything around any rules around that. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Travis. Okay.
I don't see any other hands, and I did not receive any emails and public comment.
Okay, so Christian, um, or Hector, do you want to respond to any of those comments about the timeline? And, um, Town can respond about what happens if they don't complete in 24 months.
Yes, 24 months and, um, Monday through Friday and cleanup on Saturdays. Is there, um, and, and, um, and planning, which is what I do every week is I, I sweep the street from the top of the street all the way down because, and then the next day, the wind blows and there's leaves again, and I do, have to do it every Saturday. So I, 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 or Sundays. Does that count? Cleaning up my.
In the construction management plan that you generate, will be, will you consider doing a bus vehicle to bring guys up and down?
Oh, yes, yes, I will. I, I, um, I, I always do. At, right now, I do that, the same thing, yeah. And I don't have any trucks parking, except my own, and it parks in front of my property.
Right.
And, um, when I do concrete pours, I, I follow the rules by putting the signs out, I think a week early or whatever it is, I, I always follow those rules. Get my permits to close the street. And, um, and I won't, I don't want to work Saturdays and, I mean, Sundays and, and the, um, holidays.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So I will follow those rules.
I, I, I believe you will, all right. Planning Department, can you respond about permit extensions and that kind of thing? Or what happens if they don't complete in 24 months?
So a building permit is, uh, it lasts for 12 months, and it can be extended. And to be able to extend it, there needs to be, uh, an understanding of what is left to be done. Is that going to happen within the 12 months? There's, um, an inspection required to make sure that there's an understanding of what's been done and what's left to be done. Um, so it really is a case-by-case situation and requires, um, the inspector to feel confident that the work done thus far is, um, sufficient and that the additional extension is going to be able to have them be able to complete the project.
Okay.
And we do watch our construction projects pretty closely. Um, we do receive complaints on projects that take, um, longer than anticipated. Um, it's, it's a bit of a delicate balance because, um, it's a hard climate to be doing construction with labor and construction costs and weather. Um, all sorts of delays can happen. So, um, it's, it's something we try to work with applicants on, but there needs to be some assurance that it can be done within the timeline.
Yeah. In this case, I believe the 24 months is adequate. Um, but, um, we're not velvetera. We don't penalize people for not meeting their timeline. Right. They just get another, they have to pay you more money.
Yes, and I know we've contemplated, um, and that might come up during our work plan conversation again.
Yeah.
Um, but we do not have any fines and penalties related to that or an ordinance that enforces, um, construction in that way.
Are there any fees specific to Christmas Tree Hill?
Construction?
Yeah.
Not imposed by our building department. Um, there may be something under the encroachment permit that Public Works issues to be able to, um, work through the construction management plan.
So otherwise, the typical, uh, division of fees, road impact, those kind of things are normal for any permit anywhere in town?
I see, yes, there's no additional impact fees related to Christmas Tree Hill.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, nobody else with a hand raised, I guess? All right. So we've gone through a lot here, and I think it's time to sort of, uh, give these guys some feedback or discuss among ourselves. I don't know that there's a lot to discuss amongst ourselves. I think I'm clear on where everybody stands with this. So you guys can go back and reiterate to these gentlemen where you stand and what you think about these elements that we're here to consider, design, to set the variances and so forth. So I'm going to start over there with you, Valerie, again, on the right, and see what you have to say to these guys.
All right, um, so I think the, uh, we understand, and I understand the need for the growing family, and you have your grandkids living there. We understand that the house, the current house is very small and the need for the expansion. Um, however, I am having difficult time finding certain findings, especially when it comes to the variance for the setbacks. And, um, even though I understand the reasoning for the garage not being able to build, it seems like where Dan was leading, uh, with his questions is that if you were not to build the garage, the living room area could still be built at the 30-foot height. It seems like that could be, um, still possible. Uh, so to me specifically, the biggest concern that I have is for the variance of the side setback. Specifically, I feel like the height of the current house existing is already at 36. The variance has been granted, uh, before. And if we stick to that, that could potentially be repeated. However, the side setback, that's where I have the most concerns about, and I personally cannot meet, um, finding, um, C, which is the variance or adjustment will not constitute a grant of special privileges, same one that Margaret has, um, put as a concern. And another finding, um, that I personally cannot meet is the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district findings. Uh, and it's the first one, that the grading plan is designed to retain the natural and existing features of the land. Um, you know, there are much more details there that I don't have to read to you. But, uh, to me, it seems that the structure in a relationship to the land is massive. If we were to maintain the required setbacks on a side, especially on the south side, it, it feels that you would be able to design the house that is conforming to the contour of the land a little bit better. That's, um, that's where I am with just thoughts and where it is. I feel like it's just the structure is way too massive for the land. And obviously, we don't have like, you know, I, I understand you, you're an expert in the field and you will make it structurally sound, uh, no doubt in that. But, um, I do have just doubts, what will it take to get there in terms of the land and, uh, cuts and infill?
Okay, good. Um, thank you for that. Um, I'm going to go over to you, Margaret, and see what you have to say about the findings and so forth.
I have nothing to add to what Valerie said, but I concur with what she said exactly. My concern is tremendous concern about the height. And, uh, I don't, as far as the findings we would have to make for the variances, I, I need a much better explanation about how we could make those findings. Um, because right now, it would be difficult for me to make findings that are necessary here. I think there has to be a very broad outreach to the neighborhood and the neighbors who might be impacted. I think that, uh, there are some concerns that neighbors have voiced already that have to be addressed. And I think that there has to be a lot more research done about the, the, uh, erosion, the drainage and all those kinds of things. I know that comes later on in the process, but a preliminary kind of report or study would be, uh, I think, essential for us to go further with saying two years of excavation and building would not have an impact on that, uh, hillside.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Andrew, your thoughts about this?
There we go. I think all in all, I, I kind of get, um, I'm not, I don't really have a problem with the height. Um, I understand that there's a pre-existing condition here that it was built to an earlier height limit than exists now. I don't have a problem with, um, the project largely being built to the south of the existing structure, because I can appreciate how the existing structure does constitute the north edge of the project. But I still question that it's going pops possibly a little bit too far south, as I talked about with bedroom four in particular. And I'm not crystal clear on the planning department's take on whether that increased side yard setback is, where, where, where that lands, if, if, if we as a planning commission have discretion to be okay with it either way. But I still come back to the, I still come back to your drawing 10, which shows where it actually is encroaching, where that to be enforced. And I, I just have some problems with, um, it going a little too far to the south. And I, I still think that it, it could comply, and, um, you might lose a little space, but I think you still have a, a very large usable house. And I think that that portion on, um, bedroom four isn't necessarily like critical to the overall plan, is a thought. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, over to you, Dan.
Uh, I, I like some of the other commissioners. I'm having a little trouble finding, uh, the, making the findings for the variance, uh, item B and C of the variance finding. And, um, I guess what I, I'd ask either you or the staff, um, uh, could provide perhaps some more information. For example, you say that the second steepest slope on Christmas Tree Hill at 70%, but if 50% of the slopes are also at 65, there's not much difference between 65 and 70 to grant a variance here, in my opinion. And I would also say the same thing about the height, that, you know, I'd like to understand relative to the neighbors, in order to find, make a finding of variance, that, that, that this is not a condition that is typical and that would not apply to everybody else. So I don't know yet whether that's, the applicant wants to do that research or staff could do that research, but that's, that would help me make a finding, one way or the other, relative to B and C of the variance. And I would also like to see on the application, and I don't know, again, whether this is a reach, but I'd like to see an outline of the construction management plan, doesn't have to have all the details, but at least some of the major things around, as Peter mentioned, you know, workman hours, days, and how the street closures are going to be handled, given the narrowness of the street, and how many people have to use the street to go to work, drop their kids off and so forth, and how that's going to be managed. So it doesn't have to be in detail, but at least something we could perhaps recommend to staff.
Okay, got it. Yeah, we don't usually get those, but it's in the, our approval says that there will be a CMP, and it talks about it usually, that what it describes goes into the CMP. And Dan is asking for something a little more than that. For my part, I agree with Andrew. I think that that south side could be shortened up a little bit. Really granting variances just because it sticks out a little bit is not something we like to do here at the commission. However, I am supportive of the height issue. When you walk up and down Christmas Tree Hill, you see garages that have been built on steep lots, you drive right into the garage. I think that's acceptable to have a garage at the front of the property like that. And many of those places have room for one car in front of them, parked sideways. You guys have created enough space for two cars and two cars in the garage. I think that's good. Having that house at that elevation does not create a visual impact, I think, for people on the road. It looks like a house on the hill. Right now, you don't even see a house for the most part when you drive by, it's down below. So, but off to the side, I think you guys would do well to illustrate for your cases in asking for a variance to the side yard to show how it does not follow the regulation they're talking about, where a hillside lot, height, all that comes into play. And that's in the section that Tracy's mentioned, section 18.08-320. I think that if you illustrate why it's not applicable, we could consider it. Otherwise, I would not support that. I think that showing more explicitly in a single page overlay, again, about the parking, you've got the old on one page and the new on another page, I think it would help to demonstrate what's the improvement to the parking, because it would be an improvement. I have no issue with the pool or anything there. I agree with Andrew that it should be to the south, to the north, the lot is steeper. It's harder to build over there. The access for parking, everything is to the south side of it. There is almost no visual impact to the neighbors because they're all so distant. The one to the south has got a rear yard setback against them. Everybody is a long ways away. But that said, it is kind of a beast of a house up there. And I appreciate what you put together for staggering it up the hillside. It's just big. If there were some architectural elements that you could add to this in some way, I don't know what they might be, but the people that are so far away have got to look at this thing all the time. It's a big facade up there. Try to do something with the height of those lower empty spaces that are on stilts, create some sort of height break in those things, so it doesn't look quite so high. That would be my suggestion. I think that a lot of the site is bare down below, and maybe that's the beauty of the site for you, is that it's bare down below. You might consider some trees going in down there that are the right kind of trees to go in. So that you'd establish some privacy for yourself and establish some privacy from the neighbors down below. I think that comprises my commentary. Do you guys have any further questions you want to ask of us up here at this point?
I just want to thank you guys for your comments, and we'll, we'll work on the side and see what we can do to improve it. On, and we can't go to the, what is it, the other side of the, what, east, that southeast?
Right, sorry, yeah.
We can't go towards that yard, that yard area, because there's no, there's no access to the garage, it's too, too high. So it would be even higher because the hill climbs up. So it would be way over the 30 feet. If we put the garage on that, and, and the access is, is too steep, that's where the street flattens out where we're putting the garage, and then it starts climbing again. So.
I will say, I think you guys did a great job trying to analyze this for us. It needs some further enhancement and rubs and some adjustments. It's a tough application and a tough build.
It is, yes. I mean, it's not a tough build, but it's a tough application.
I know, I build these things all the time. It's hard.
Yeah, I could tell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had two technical clarifications.
Yeah.
The regarding grading, cut and fill, it sounds like a couple of you think there's a lot, this house is almost entirely, the house itself is entirely on piers and grade beams, there's no cut and fill, except boring the holes. The only cut and fill is for the pool, and it's balanced. The exact amount of cut is the exact amount of fill, so there's no X-hole. So there is some cut and fill down there, but there's not a lot relative to the house at all. The spoils, of course, have to be hauled away from the drilling. And also, there is a small piece of added residential that goes into the height limit as well, not just the garage. So there, it's to get that living room a little bigger, it does pull into the, the 36 is what we're working with. And then the garage has the whole edge. But what we've done is we've flipped the roof and brought it down two and a half, two, two foot, four inches to make sure everything stays down below the 36 and doesn't add anything. But there is a little piece of residential
Yeah.
over the kitchen.
Just to address your, your comment about the piers and so forth, is that there's no significant disturbance of a site slope that many homes do incur. I don't know whether you're using a, what kind of rig would do those drills, those piers, but yeah, it's, yeah, so it's, it's just managing the hillside, that's what people have concerns about, and that's what your erosion control plan will demonstrate, what you're doing to stabilize the hillside, because guys are going to go up and down, the, the roots are going to get trampled. So you have to manage that, that's just what happens. So you know that. Okay. I hope we've been helpful and that you guys have some direction to go forward for your next steps. Okay, thank you. All right. Do you guys want to take a five, 10-minute break here before we go into the AMI dissertation here? Okay. Hi, we're back at the Town of Cortomadera Planning Commission, and the next item on our agenda is consideration of finalized public noticing policy, the signs. Okay, I'm excited about this issue, so let's get right. I'm the one, I said to these guys, you got to get some signs up in town, and sure enough, here we are, we got some signs. So have at it.
Good evening, Chair Chase and Commissioners. This evening, we are bringing back a finalized public noticing policy for your consideration. You've already heard this item and provided feedback on it, so we'll keep the presentation brief, but we are available to answer any questions at the end. As a reminder of some of the background and research we've done, the action item, establish, enhance public noticing standards for large projects, was included in the 2024 and 2025 Cortomadera staff work plans. Large projects are expected to increase in number as we see more redevelopment associated with housing element opportunity sites. Projects of this scale and complexity will involve extensive entitlement processes and necessitate robust community engagement. As part of this policy development, staff reviewed the policies of neighboring jurisdictions that have noticing requirements that exceed those mandated by state law. And the primary difference between the policies analyzed and the town's current requirements was the inclusion of onsite signage for qualifying projects. In July of 2025, staff presented a draft policy to the commission for feedback. The policy was organized into a matrix format with five tiers, and the proposed framework established enhanced noticing for a variety of major development projects. The primary changes to noticing requirements were related to onsite signage for qualifying development projects. Commissioners provided feedback, which was considered by staff and incorporated in the final policy as found appropriate. And then staff also reached out to the commissioners that were absent for that meeting and for their input as well. This slide is showing some of the commission feedback that was implemented into the final policy. Commissioners indicated that there should be a correlation between the number and size of signs and site characteristics, that 500-foot noticing should be considered for tier one and tier two projects, that rendering should be included on the large noticing signs. It was also suggested that banners within the public right of way be used to publicize larger projects, that community newsletters and the use of the community center reader board could be considered in outreach efforts, and that project notices should be posted at town hall. This slide shows the commission feedback that was not implemented into the final policy. The feedback included a suggestion, a suggestion for the increase in sign size for tier three projects, the requirement for onsite signage for controversial tier four projects, and an additional next door posting prior to public hearings. The staff report provides an explanation for why each of these items was not implemented. To conclude and provide a recommendation, once a policy has been accepted, it will be posted to the town's website, and staff will alert the council of the work plan item completion. And we recommend that after a review of the staff report, presentations, public testimony and available materials, that the commission accept the proposed noticing policy. And that's it, so we are here for questions.
Okay then, all right. So I trust that everybody has looked at these demonstrative pieces of public engagement. So this is a comment section back to staff, and we'll ask for public comment and then vote on this. So Margaret, do you have any commentary on this item?
I do. I particularly think that the inclusion of the community newsletters is great, and the use of this reader board is another really good tool. I just am wondering if there's a place in East Cortomadera where a reader board or some significant attention could be placed. I don't know exactly of any, I'm thinking maybe near that fire station, or maybe at the Nugget somehow, but often East Cortomadera is the last to learn, just, just because of visibility. I didn't understand why next door wouldn't be a good idea, putting, posting on next door.
I think the, currently what we do is when we post the packet on Friday before the Tuesday hearing, we post on next door, and we say, the packet's ready, you know, here's the link. And I think the suggestion from the commission was to add an additional posting on Monday. And so I think staff's concern was just, you know, over the weekend, we aren't posting on socials, in that, you know, this, having too many posts for meetings or for projects or just even related planning things could oversaturate the overall town's accounts. And so for this time, we've just proposed to leave that as the posting on Friday before the meeting.
I, I just thought of one other thing. There's a newsletter that's put out by, I forget what it's called, Age Friendly Cortomadera, something like that. And if there's a, a posting that would be applicable to people of that age range, that might be another place to post a hearing about, especially like the, that Best Western project or something. And so I think it's, the great, I think it's well done, understandable, and I would approve it.
Oh, that's great. Okay, over to you, Valerie, I'm switching sides here completely.
All right, I just have a couple of the questions and then maybe like two recommendations. But how would you document the compliance with the onsite signage requirements and if someone will fail installation of the sign requirement?
We've developed a template that an applicant would need to complete and fill out and send to, to staff to indicate they put up the sign, and obviously we would do a site visit to verify that the signs were, were installed as well.
Okay, thank you. And in, if there are large signs vandalized or removed, so whose responsibility would be to replace them? Would it be solely on the applicant? Or, and also, would that delay any hearing dates if that happens?
It would be the applicant that would be required to replace any signs that were damaged or, or removed. Ideally, that would not delay hearings, you know, it would be evaluated on a case by case basis, and if a sign was damaged right before the hearing, we would, you know, discuss internally what was, you know, made sense and was appropriate.
And could that potentially impact the public engagement, especially for the tier one, tier two projects?
If a sign was
If the sign got removed, yeah, for some reason.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's highly unlikely these signs would be removed, given their, their size, you know, they're four by six and six by eight, so they're fairly large signs. I think what's probably more likely is they could be vandalized, but it would, you know, the individuals trespassing onto private property, so ideally, you know, that would not be occurring, but I, I think But I I think it's probably unlikely that these signs would be removed.
But to Valerie's point, there's nothing in an ordinance that would say that the hearing shall be delayed if the sign is not present, right?
And then if there is no flat frontage where the sign can be placed, are there any exceptions that will be written out for on to how to install the sign?
So yeah, all the sites have street frontage. And so the sign would be required where in a visible location. And for sites that have multiple frontages, more than one sign would be required. So for example, the 56 Madera site, there'd be required to have a a sign on the Madera, on Madera, and then also another one on on Tamil Vista.
I see. Okay. All right. And then I have just a few recommendations. So for the tier two projects, I feel like the those projects impact a greater community beyond the 300 required feet. So I feel like tier three projects could stay within the 300 feet requirement, but I would just change it for the 500 feet for the tier two projects.
They've done that. Yeah, it's
It's and the table, it still shows 300.
Evaluate. So you would recommend
500.
Yeah.
Yeah. Radius there. And then I just would like just to somewhere so it states clearly that the hearing must be postponed if onsite signage is not installed by the deadline. And also to follow with that is that another line somewhere to say explicitly that during the appeal period, the sign should remain posted through all of the 10 days. I don't think it's anywhere was stated like that. That's all.
Any thoughts about any of those comments?
So the issue of providing notice within 300 feet or 500 feet, we typically do go to 500 feet depending on the project and just to provide that that extra radius. But we do do note that in the municipal code, we do have 300 feet in there. So it there is a conflict there. These are guideline forms, so these can change. So I think what staff did is they put evaluate 500 feet. So if it's possible, we will go to 500 feet, but we don't want to expressly say that it's going to be 500 feet without really going back and changing the code. And the code really matches state law. So I think this is one area where it'll be a case by case situation if if the commission is comfortable with that. And then we can always reevaluate this whole noticing policy after a year or so and see what worked, what didn't. If there are some situations where we did only 300 feet, why did we do that? And kind of take it on a case by case basis as we go.
Would that be inconsistent with kind of the project outreach in regards to being subjective outreach in a way? Because like some projects, like like who would determine like that this project is the worth of reaching out to 500 feet versus the 300 feet, right? Like it seems like it could be project, if it's a project by project case study, it seems like it would be very subjective. And then we have a lot of cases when, you know, people coming into the room and saying that they haven't heard anything about the project. And then they could be just on that borderline just because they haven't been reached out to.
Well, in general, I think one reason we may not want to do 500 feet is if there's no residences past 300 feet or you know, so sometimes we do a larger area because, for instance, if something's at the village or I'm using as an example, but there's not many residences within 300 feet, so we'd want to go a little bit further. But you also want to consider the impact of what the project is and who's going to be your primary audience. So it really is somewhat subjective. Once you get past the state requirement. So it just, it is really dependent on what the project is, where is it? How many people are we actually going to get with that extra? And I will say, we do find people that say they did not receive a notice, but we can always go back and check and make sure if notices aren't, if they bounce back, we receive those. So, you know, we do try to note those things, but a lot of times it's people just not reading their mail. And that's why we do so many different layers of noticing to make sure that we, you know, maybe they'll see it in a different way. But a lot of people just simply do not read their notice in the mail, and that's just problematic.
That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Valerie. I'm going to look at you, Dan.
Thanks. First of all, I think it's very good and thorough piece of work. I guess question is, this is policy and it's not going to be codified in zoning. So what as policy, what recourse do we have if if someone doesn't follow the policy? And is it enough to make sure that we get what we want?
Yeah, so we do have other guidelines that are in addition to our code on various other subjects as well. So as long as we're applying it consistently, and we we will conclude this as part of our application materials as well, it is something that we can enforce to a point. So we, of course, have to follow the minimums under state law, but these would be a requirement for moving forward on applications.
So you feel policy is adequate?
Yeah, and this is pretty typical from other jurisdictions as well. The staff really evaluated, you know, what other jurisdictions are doing related to the signage. And many have this in addition to their municipal code. And having it in guideline form or in this policy form really allows us to be more nimble, make changes to it. You know, sign companies may change certain things. And there's just an ability to kind of keep it pretty fresh and make sure to be updating it if certain things don't work or if maybe there's no more next door, you know, those kinds of things.
On on page three, tier two, it seems like the we refer to new commercial building or new residential building, but not major alterations or major remodels of things with five units or more or commercial properties. And a remodel or addition could be as significant as the building, existing building itself.
Yeah, we added that to the tier three based on feedback from the last meeting. We added major modifications to a multifamily project, not to tier two, but to tier three instead. We could move that to tier two.
But tier three is a much smaller sign. And if we have a large commercial project that's doubling in size, we're not going to get an appropriate sized sign. Also, related question is, we use the term major remodel and major alteration. Is there a difference and are those terms defined?
Yeah, the terms are the terms are not defined in our in our code. So we can, I think if someone was just remodeling a building and wasn't adding square footage, I think we it'd be appropriate to leave it in tier three. But if someone is doing a substantial remodel and adding significant square footage, then I agree, we would would want a large, large onsite sign. So maybe we can differentiate and put a major modification with and do a threshold of a square footage, that it's increasing the square footage by 50% and move that to tier two. And then in tier three would be things that were less than that.
And then again, is there a difference between major alterations and major remodel?
No.
So we could use one of those terms consistently?
Yes.
And then would staff then have to approve the location of the sign, particularly in tier one and two? Okay, that's it, Peter.
Okay, thank you. Andrew.
Appreciate the work that went into this thing, and I think it's great the way it is. Thank you.
I like some of the suggestions here. And with that said, I think you've taken note of those. There's not significant, but they're minor to this. And you could incorporate that into revised and final noticing policy, right? Other than that, we don't really vote on anything here. We're just giving you feedback, right? Yeah. Is there anybody online that wants to publicly comment on this issue?
Anyone online?
Okay, thank you. Let's get somebody. All right. So with that said, you've got what you came for, right? And that's that's really it. Okay. Thank you, guys. I'm I'm not kidding. I'm excited about this. Okay. We have the final item of the night. And that is the discussion of the town work plan for 2026. I don't know who's responsible for this, but no.
Well, we're going to work on getting the presentation up for that item. I think you guys will have it, right? Yeah, okay.
It's somewhere in the system, huh? Yeah.
It is. But I will just say the the next item is related to our work plan. So about this time every year, we do come to you with just an update on what we've done over this previous year and just get input on what you would like to see for as far as the staff work plan next year. And this does go to the council. They have a strategic planning session in January. And so all our advisory committees have an opportunity to to weigh in on on what can be prioritized for the next year. So one of the things I wanted to talk about is just what we've done for this year and what was on our work plan. We we did some things that weren't on the work plan as well, but I'll just walk through some of the accomplishments thus far. First is we did adopt a new permit fee schedule that covered planning and building fees. The fire fees were actually just updated this week, so those will go into effect early next year. So basically, all of our permitting fees have been updated to reflect the cost of the permitting and just to create more efficiency for applicants and more clarity on the system. And then that also included some discounts related to incentivizing conversion from gas to electric. And it also included some some reductions or discounts for accessibility and for low income community. And that and that's explicitly from the staff work plan from this year. And then beyond that, the council did adopt a 50% reduction in building permit fee for affordable units as well. And then beyond that, there was also a discussion around housing opportunities for staff. So we brought forward an item with a potential option to purchase a unit to the council earlier this year. They declined to purchase that unit, but we did receive good feedback on where the council would like to go as far as creating housing opportunities for staff with the goal of increasing retention. And just one more piece to our our housing puzzle here and and being able to have affordable housing for our staff. And then just recently, the building code amendments were adopted. That included expanded reach codes. So the reach codes will now kick in at 500 square feet and above and instead of 750 square feet and above. And then you just heard the development of noticing standards for large projects that was on our staff work plan. Tracy led an effort around the street tree list and adopting a new ordinance to amend our code with that information. We did a short term rental study session earlier this year, and that was really to get feedback on the program as a whole, provide an update and understand next steps. So we did receive feedback to do some amendments to our short term rental ordinance. So that is something that we'll be carrying over. And then the next item was code enforcement, admin citation ordinance that was actually introduced last night at the council. So that will be done very early next year if that goes for its second reading and is adopted. And then commercial code modernization. So on the work plan, this actually reads as looking at opportunities for gyms being able to operate outdoors. It's kind of a remnant of the pandemic. Martha wrote a parklet ordinance for public right of way to be used for restaurants to operate outside. And the gyms was the last piece of that, so looking at private property. But as part of that, we really wanted to modernize and re-envision how our commercial code works. So that's going to include some work on our parking standards to make those more flexible and also some work on temporary uses. So all of that will be coming to you in the spring and and we literally just kicked that off last week. So more to come on on that effort. And then a more recent add to the work plan was the Menke Park Micro Business Pilot Program, which is the allowance of a food truck in the old Cordera Madera Square area in Menke Park. And then also continuing to digitize town property files and then continuing to close expired building permits. And then one item that almost made it on the work plan, but the applicants chose to apply for it on their own was to amend our code related to decks in our floodplain areas and being able to have expanded areas for raised decks. So we'll move to the next slide. Thank you, Claire, for pulling that up as well. So I just wanted to reiterate some of the things when thinking about our work plans considerations. Obviously, a lot of things aren't just happening in one year. They're going to take multiple years. And so there are some things that are going to be multi-year efforts. We also have a lot of activity at the state level. So every year we get a new flurry of things we have to amend based on state law. A lot of it has to do with housing, but there's there's other things as well. So those are sometimes hard to predict and sometimes happen mid-year. But we do have an understanding of what we need to do for this next year. And then the other thing is just resource availability and staff capacity. We this year have had quite an influx of applications in general, but particularly our large multifamily applications. And we do anticipate another large application being submitted next year in addition to the continuing processing of the 56 Madera application. So that really does impact our ability to focus on policy efforts and and some of these efforts that you see in a staff work plan. Because the permits, we cannot meter the permits coming in the door, obviously. So that is something that we know we can do our best to manage. We do have the ability to hire consultants to help us process some of the development applications. We are planning to bring on a consultant to help us with some of the subdivision activities that are happening. But that is a factor in how much we take on and how much we we say we have capacity to implement or to accomplish and for a calendar year. And the other thing is metrics and reporting. We really want to make sure whatever we take on, that we're going to be able to implement well and to be able to track and and show whether it made a measurable difference. Next slide, please. So I already went through some of these, but these slides are really just giving you status of things that beyond what was accomplished that we just went through. So there are quite a few things that are in process right now or that we haven't yet started. So some of those here are highlighted that will be moving forward to the to the next year. And one of the bigger ones is related And one of the bigger ones is related to housing element implementation. There's multiple things that we have to do this next year. A lot of it has to do with policy. Some of it relates to things that are in our housing element that ask us to review as far as renter protections, concepts that are in our housing element policy that actually have dates attached to them. So we, we have to be moving those things forward to stay in compliance with our housing element requirements. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else here that I really need to highlight for you, but we can answer questions if you have any beyond this. Can we get to the next slide, please? And then along with the planning items, we also want to talk about what's happening on the building side of things. The building team really did a great job of accomplishing a lot this year. We have an excellent building official that, and excellent climate action person, Phoebe, who, and they're just a powerful team and were really able to get through the building code amendments this year and the reach codes and really help working through some of the fee incentivized conversion options. So most of the work plan for building was actually accomplished this year. There is an ADA self-assessment plan that's going to be going to the council early next year, representing a lot of work that occurred in 2025. And then our code enforcement team is complete with looking at expired building permits and notifying those people so they can come in, get permitted and rectify those situations. And then on the next slide, this is looking at other efforts that aren't squarely in planning or building. We do have a mix of things that are either underway or not started. So there is one that likely will come to you and that's related to something to do with our town hall and putting a town logo art or clock on the outside of our building. So we'll be working on that effort this year. Adam and I are working with the Chamber of Commerce to really look at the future of the organization and how we can help them continue on post-closure of our major TOT generator, which is our Best Western Hotel. And then a few other things in here that do interact with, with our department. So, so I want to hear from you all and what other ideas you have. I will say those items that are continuing over, combined with the permit activity that we have, is capacity. And so I'm really not proposing a lot of new things for this next year, but I do want to highlight a few things that I think we, we will be looking at that we haven't started and it hasn't been really discussed at length. One is AB 1033, which is consideration of ADUs allowing them to be sold separately or to be condoized, condo minimized. It's very late to say that word. But this is something that's been in state law for a couple of years. We opted to not do this when, when our last ADU ordinance came through. But the more we learn about this and the more we see other jurisdictions, it really does look like just a fantastic tool and a really, for aging populations, because it allows people to be able to move into an ADU and, and sell their main home separately. So I, I think that's something that we may want to look at doing. One thing I mentioned earlier is tenant protections. So we do have a housing collaborative with other jurisdictions that kicked off during the housing element process, but continues on and we hope will continue on once the grant dollars are gone. But as part of that effort, there is an option to work with other jurisdictions on a concept around rental registry. So we're just exploring those possibilities, but that is absolutely in line with what our housing element and HCD has asked us to really consider. Impact fee updates. We have some very old impact fees that are ripe for some updates. We struggle with these when we talk to developers and when we try to assess the fees that these will need to be, you know, how we would apply these fees. They're, they're very antiquated and they need an update. So that's kind of on our, our personal wish list for the planning side of things. And then Commissioner Bendel has brought this up a couple of times now, but limits on the timing of construction. So one reason that we did not add this on to the work plan last year is because we were planning some updates to our code enforcement ordinance related to penalties. That ordinance has been developed and was introduced last night, so that work is continuing on. So if we wanted to talk about an extension of our code enforcement penalty structure to include the limits on construction timing, that, that is something that you can recommend tonight. And then also, there is another regional effort around VMT or vehicles mild-traveled. There's, the Transportation Authority of Marin is creating a VMT toolkit. And it, it's very complex, but it's really just looking at how we analyze traffic, moving from congestion to a length of a trip. And we have not done this yet in Corte Madera or really in Marin as a whole. So Transportation Authority is really trying to move that conversation along. So that will conclude at some point in 2026. And that will call the question on us if we want to adopt some new policy related to that, which will include a lot of interesting things related to reducing automobile traffic and creating different options for new development coming in. And then beyond this, one thing I didn't put on is that we are working on a request for proposals to look for a consultant to help us do an economic strategic plan. So that will be, I'm striving to get that released by the end of this year. But that will allow us to do an update, or not even an update, but a development of an economic strategic plan, which will align with your work as well. So with that, I will open it up to you all and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Amy. That's a lot of recounting what's going on and what needs to go on in a very short timeframe. Before turning it over to the other commissioners, Dan had his letter that's in the report asking for some discussion about scenic corridor roadways. And I'll let him talk about that to add on to his thing. When we're talking about Tamil Vista Corridor and Madera Avenue, in the previous meetings, we talked about what happens along that corridor and previous discussions about what has, has been designed for those places. So that's that. Dan, do you want to jump into anything in particular here?
Well, I, I could. I don't know if you want me to do that now as opposed to getting comments on what Amy's presented?
I want you to comment on that.
Yeah.
Give her feedback for what we talked about here.
So I think one of the, for me, one of the challenges in reviewing projects, particularly larger projects, is that we're, we're looking at it in isolation. We're looking at the site plan of a site and we're not looking at it in the context of how does that affect the whole town? And I think a, a good example might be the project we recently looked at on Madera Avenue for the independent living project. When you look at what staff got to review initially, it was a site plan and some elevations. And what we got to look at was 22 sheets of drawings, including engineering. So if, if we had a kind of urban design framework for our major thoroughfares that both the commission and the staff could use as a guide, particularly when reviewing early phases of projects where there's really might be an opportunity to improve the project. I mean, that was a project where at least some commission members felt like putting parking, two rows of parking on two of our major thoroughfares in town was not the best approach to that. And I think that's also true of Tampa Pius when we think about, you know, some studies that may be done in the future around the town-owned property. And anyway, so, you know, you can read this thing, but I think the problem for me is that we're always looking at these things in isolation and not what cumulatively is going to be the impact of these projects over time. And particularly when we're getting more and more of these SB 330 projects that are very large and have a very large impact.
Yes, thank you, Dan. And I apologize for not mentioning your comment letter. If it were earlier in the night, I would have remembered to do that. I also just want to note, we do have a special guest. We have Adam here. And I will say that your comments are timely because it is something that we've been discussing as a team. Adam and I have been talking about our various corridors and really needing something more aligned with the work that you're doing, but also just economic development, creating place-making and having some just aligned design continuity in some of these areas. So that's something I can absolutely bring forward. But it'd be great to hear from others if there's some consensus on that issue.
Yeah, thank you. Adam, were you going to say something about that? No, you're just there to hear. So, okay. Do you have any other comments for Amy about the intended work plan coming up?
No.
Okay. Hey, Valerie over there?
Well, I cannot agree more with Dan's letter and comments. I think continuity in design is significant and it, you know, we, we have a lot of people who bike, who, who walk around the areas, me including. You know, there, there are things in the community that could be done by Public Works, by, you know, by our parks and recreation things, but not just to beautify the areas, which they're doing an amazing job at. And I think like, you know, looking at the year behind, like what you guys done is a lot of work. So I think there is just, you know, tremendous amount of effort that has been placed with this. But in regards to this specifically, creating the corridors and visual continuity in design is essential for, for the community in general. So like, you know, expanding our walkways and parks and greenery in the areas and especially around the areas where we are expecting large developments happening. Setting up some design guidelines, I feel like we don't have any playbook for the applicants to go off and everyone comes off with their own design language, which is challenging to critique because we do have a limited discretion here and we, we can't really suggest the design because that will be deemed subjective. We also cannot suggest other things because it will go against the state regulations. So we are extremely limited. So creating like some sort of design playbook of recommending of what Corte Madera is about, what we would like to see, I think that would be very helpful. And if, I, I totally understand that you are at capacity and any additional work is going to be a burden. But at the same time, I feel like, and we've been talking about it a little bit before, that maybe together with a climate action group, like we could create some sort of, again, the playbook of recommending design strategies for the environmental design on how even a residential applicant, like put aside the commercial right now, can come over, look at quick guidance on how to make the home greener. Like even with the, you know, small remodel, from the smaller remodels to larger remodels. Larger remodels are more straightforward because we do have that in the code and CalGreen kind of covers a lot of that. But I feel like setting up a little design guidance with environmental guidance for the building specifically of what we would like to achieve. So besides the just CalGreen, like what, what are the basics we would like to advise to people? Because very often in all of the applications, I feel like I'm sounding like a broken record and asking the questions like, would you, would you not go for lead, right? Would you be that exemplary for the Corte Madera? And of course, they all will say maybe, because that's what they will say. But at the same time, they don't want to spend time and money on investing into this. So perhaps if we have some sort of guidelines that puts out that this is where Corte Madera wants to be and this is what we're striving for, people will be more incentivized and encouraged to do these things specifically. And I think that goes along with the design guidance for some of the major streets that we have here in Corte Madera. But other than that, I think the work, you know, have just started and there is still a lot to go to. So thank you guys doing an amazing job of that. And, and just questions for the clarification, maybe just I'm, for my own knowledge, is it the year wrong or is it because we are proving the items in one year and they're moving into another year? Because it's saying 2024 work plan items and then potential 2025, but we're going into 2026. It's confusing.
In the presentation?
Yes.
It must, it's a mistake. Yes. Wherever you see that, that is not correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I was thinking is because we, it's the approval of the year and then that's when it's getting executed.
Yep.
Okay, no. Okay, sorry. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. Margaret, do you have some comments for the next three and a half minutes or before we have to vote to go past 10? Or do you want to vote to go past 10 and then we call it a night after that?
I guess we could vote first.
Okay. Everybody else? We vote to finish the subject and then go home? Dan?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So we have a unanimous?
We have time to do the minute and approve the minute.
That'll be a yes. We will make time. It's a short vote. Yes. Okay. So we have a unanimous vote to go past 10. Margaret, go ahead.
So just one comment about something Dan said, and I had made a note of it too. Talk about planning, one of the biggest eyesores, I think, in Corte Madera is that old cinema site. I don't know what, I, I understand that person is hard to get along with. Whatever creative way the town could think of to move that site into something productive would be huge. As long as I've been here, I mean, open up the movie theater again. But that site is just such an eyesore along that corridor. And then also along what Dan said, and it sort of points up something that, being an East Corte Madera resident, I feel strongly, there are some major corridors in East Corte Madera. There's San Clemente Drive, there's the Frontage Road, there's a lot of commercial stuff that goes on. There's Paradise Drive and quite a few developments there. And, and I, I, I feel like we forget East Corte Madera. And so in, in the plans and in consideration, I'd just like to bring a little more visual attendance to, to East Corte Madera. And then I'm very, very invested in the idea of some kind of parameters around the time it takes to build and a residence or a building and the upheaval it brings to a community. I think I'm, the project across the street from me is reaching the, probably the height or the time limit of known Marin projects even. So I'm very invested in that and I will just offer that anything I can do to help in writing, planning, whatever, I'm available. But otherwise, I, you know, I've always thought our planning department is second to none. And I think people who come and appear before us would concur because they're always thanking everybody. And so, you know, I congratulate you on your efforts and things that have been accomplished. And I know it's a lot, but let's keep going.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. Hey, Andrew, what do you want to say?
I don't have any comments on the work plan, but I, I just wanted to comment on Dan's plan, which I completely agree with. And I think it's, it's tricky, right? Because I think we would have to come to agreement on what kind of standards we would like, what kind of vision we have for these corridors. And I completely agree with you, Margaret, that that cinema site is the one that is just such an eyesore. And I completely agree with you, Margaret, that that cinema site is the one that is just such an eyesore. And it's just like a big parking lot with the terrible building in the middle. But I think there would be a lot of work to be done to figure out both our vision and how to implement it, given that we're like, you know, up against the private sector, as it were. If the people that own the cinema site don't want to sell it, there's not a whole hell of a lot we can do about that. But we do have an opportunity when a proposal comes up to provide key input. So I don't know if it's too late for the Best Western site or how that would work, but I think it's definitely worth exploration. Thank you for that, Dan.
And city there.
All right. Thank you, guys. Just a couple of questions for you. You know, a few years ago, there was a bit of data that got downloaded about cell phone use that was more revealing about traffic patterns than almost anything else. And it tracked cell phones from Marin, from Samarfell, from the city through and so forth. That told us the story of where people are going and how often they go and what time of day and all that. That would impact strategies to reduce VMT, but there's a few other things going on. I don't know where that stands. That's a consultant that you got to hire.
Actually, the VMT toolkit, as part of that, Transportation Authority is building a model. And they gave us a little preview last week. I can send you the slides from that. It didn't get into origin and destinations, which is I think what you were looking at, but it, it kind of gave some high level data. But that will be a great tool for us to utilize in the future. Because as to date, we've only done that as part of defined projects. We didn't have a countywide traffic model that we could really utilize in that way.
Town manager might remember what that was for. I don't remember what it was for, but it was very good and helpful. And it was a, I don't know what it was for. And I worry that somebody might be saying, let's figure out how to redefine vehicle miles travel so they look better on paper and they're not really better. But anyway, that's just a comment. A few years ago, there was a comment from a planning commissioner about putting a sign in East Corte Madera Fire Station. So I'm all for that, a billboard sign, electronic billboard sign. We brought that up. That would help over there at the fire station. But I do think that, you know, when the Tamil Vista Corridor project overlay district was developed by staff and Mr. Wolf, that it really talked about what does it look like? What goes in here? What are the building sizes? All of that. I think that pertains to what Dan and everybody is talking about. What's the goal? And that's, that's a multi-year thing, plan, effort. So anyway, I think that that would conclude our feedback to you, I think. That's enough for a moment.
Thank you. And I will say that we did just meet today with representatives from 41 Tamil Vista. And so we have some encouragement that they are moving forward with a concept. So hopefully we'll have more to update sometime next year.
Bumps the word, right? So that's great. With that said, since we're wanting to go home, but we do want to get these minutes off the table. I was not present for these minutes of October 14th, but Dan can, you know, ask for a motion and get an agreement on those minutes.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from October 14th Planning Commission meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Done. At this point, let's adjourn this meeting and go home. Thank you.